And to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with Commissioner Smith.
I, Brian Smith, I have no conflicts with anything on the agenda.
Chairman Rowan, no conflicts?
Maria Wyden, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts?
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflicts.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Excellent. Staff, again, please give me a hand here. Relative to the items that we receive staff reports for, are we going to take action on all of those tonight? Is that anticipated?
Just one.
Ernie, to be continued.
So, item one is a recommendation to the city council. Since it's rezoned, items two and three have been continued at the applicant's request. He just wanted more time to work through some neighborhood issues.
Okay, thank you. Item number one, a public hearing. The applicant, Brian Wing, requests a zone change from A11 to R110 to facilitate a two-lot residential subdivision. That being said, we'll turn the time over to staff to present.
Thank you. As you, we have a map on the screen here to give you an orientation of the site. This is near 600 South and 1600 West intersection just south of that. It's a almost one-acre property, and the intent is to divide that into two lots. Because the two lots would be only 90 feet in width, it would not meet the requirement of a half-acre zone, and they're a little bit under that, too. So, going by the general plan, which is residential, and neighborhood expressed support for a 10,000-square-foot zone, we felt that would be appropriate in this case. As noted in the staff report, a lot of times, well, let's see, let me swing through these, I apologize. This shows the surrounding zoning, where you can see it's A11, it's not A110, that's my mistake. A11 is a one-acre zone. I got carried away on R110, I think, I put that in. And then, a little more of a close-up, a blurry close-up of the site. In a lot of instances, there's an argument about spot zoning, and, you know, something everybody hears in planning, different things. The state basically says there is no such thing as a spot zone. If it conforms to the general plan, it can be any size, is really the criterion. And since we do not do blanket rezonings in the city, we felt, you know, it's inappropriate to hold pieces of properties hostage that are developing as we intended them to develop. Hold them hostage until the surrounding neighbors come in. At the same time, we don't force the surrounding neighbors in, in most cases, some exceptions. So, that is why it is just that one property. Yeah. Are there any questions?
There are no questions for staff. Is the applicant here tonight? Would you care to add anything to staff's presentation?
I'm happy to have that.
Have him explain the name of the subdivision.
Yeah, your middle name, Bird, or?
I've called him Bird since I was in junior high, 15-year high.
Just a point of clarification. It does say here in the staff report that this was held up for about a year while the Public Works Department reviewed it to address sewer issues. But they've now given the green light?
Yes, thanks for asking that. They've done a study to find the sewer capacities as they exist right now. What they've done from that study is they can now run scenarios or simulations for any development coming in and figure out if it's held up or not. There's still an overall capacity, and so we may hit that. But in this instance, where you're looking for one additional hookup, they felt that that shouldn't be an issue any longer.
Thank you.
I believe also, in a couple of weeks, they're going to suggest where the new sewer plant will be located, which will obviously impact capacities, either, you know, however they decide that.
I have a question. Does this rezoning include the current house that's there on the site?
Yes.
Along with, it looks like, two subdivided property or?
Right, the existing homes is on the northern of the two lots.
Okay, so it's the current home plus one?
Right.
Gotcha.
Back on sewer, do we have much of a feel for maybe how much capacity is available? Should we anticipate maybe other projects in the area? I mean, two lots, it's pretty easy to see that even if there was a miniscule amount of capacity available. Any thoughts, or is there?
I don't think your mic's on.
Turn on. Sorry.
Am I good now?
You're on.
So, we analyze every development that comes in now for rezone and look at capacity issues. When you input one sewer connection, you don't really notice any change in the system. So, that was our analysis, is there's really no change, because it's just, it doesn't hit the register like 100 units or something else where you can actually detect a change. So, this one, we felt like it was appropriate to just add one connection. But as far as capacity in the overall system, we have areas all throughout Provo that need fixes. And some of those fixes are going to have to wait 15 years based on capital projects and funding that's available to do those fixes. Our most pressing need at the moment is the bigger picture is treatment plant and trunk lines going mostly to this west side area to take off the load on that west side area, so. So, that's why we analyze every rezone, is because we can't really just say, oh, we have this much capacity left. Overall, the plant can handle more capacity, the lines that get to the plant can't. But it's pretty localized here and there. Granted, the whole west side has no infrastructure, you know, west and south of what's already built. So, that's our hardest place right now. I think you'll see that on the maps that we handed out. It shows like nothing available versus something available versus no real issue.
Every project that was being looked at, being modeled, that's being?
Yeah, we do a model run for the property where it's at. So, we would input into our model the flow expected from one home or 100 homes, and we do that for both water and sewer to see if there's something that's going to fail.
And, sorry.
Go ahead.
Honestly, I apologize maybe more for my curiosity that don't think it pertains to this item, really. But we've been doing that, or the city's been doing that for the last couple of months, two, three. Have you been inundated with requests to identify sewer capacity for projects? It seems like we waited for a certain period of time to get to the point to where we were ready to do that analysis. So, I just wondered if there was pent-up demand and people were really anxious to?
Yeah, not really. It's just the projects that you see, most of them. We've done a few that you probably don't see, but for the most part, it's pretty manageable.
That's exactly where I was going with my question, and maybe this is the planning staff, is we have, over the last year, while we've been waiting for the results, rejected several projects. And they weren't massive projects, but they were, you know, in the half dozen to two dozen size. Are we going back to those developers as far as being good neighbors? Or do we let them just find out on their own and then come back at some point? What's the plan there?
I can't think of any that haven't been in touch with us and?
So, they're already staying up on it and know the, okay. Thanks.
Yeah, and we'd be happy to run those numbers for people that have submitted before and let them know what the issues are. You know, if there was a big deal killer that says, hey, you're going to have to wait till we get this piece of infrastructure fixed, you may not see them come before you, because they'll understand that the recommendation would be against approval from at least the utility side.
Any other questions for Mr. Day? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Public hearing tonight. Is there anybody from the public here that wants to speak on this item? Nobody? Nobody? Okay. We'll close the public hearing. Any discussion among the commissioners? If not, certainly entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the rezoning from A11 to R110 for the Bird Wing Zone rezoning, request approximately one acre, 672 South, 1600 West.
I'll second that.
Thank you. That was Commissioner Smith with the motion. Commissioner Ellsworth seconding it.
And that's to recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous. So, again, just staff, nothing else for tonight relative to action items. I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I appreciated some of the presentations that we had, or the presentations that we had before. I'd love to maybe just chat a little bit about what we had a chance to learn. If anybody has any thoughts, maybe that we could share with staff, as things maybe that they could look at before we talk about it again. I certainly like to have a follow-up discussion, particularly on the transportation master plan and, you know, the cross-section aspect of that. And for that matter, I don't certainly want to stay any longer than anybody needs to. But if there's anything else that we maybe want to talk with staff about, or staff has anything on an early night like this, I'd love to use the time as best as we can.
There's nothing in particular we have, but if there's any information or any discussion you'd like to have about the study item discussions, we'd be glad to take notes and try to make sure that you get what you're looking for. UTA and their presentation, they'll be going to the city council in the next few weeks to give a similar presentation. We didn't see their area plan being very much different from our downtown plan. It really is kind of just an extension of that. As far as Public Works' presentation on road cross-sections, in the near future, the entire transportation master plan will be coming before, first before the T-MAC, then before you, and then to the city council. And so, there will be much more in-depth discussions about concepts or parts of the transportation master plan, both in front of the T-MAC and here, too, I'm sure.
Are they coordinating with UDOT on that? One of the questions I had that didn't get asked is the overpass over the tracks. That's a?
The pedestrian bridge?
Disrepair. No, I'm talking about the actual roadway.
Oh, the road, yeah.
It's in disrepair. There's been a lot of talks about, you know, what to do.
There've been some recent discussions with UDOT about that. It seems to be moving up on their priority list. And so, there have been discussions between Public Works and UDOT on that. Yes, those are going on right now.
I mean, maybe one of the questions for me is, what's the best way to communicate back with Public Works? Is it through community development through you, or is it directly to Public Works? Or what's the best or most effective means of communication?
I would suggest or prefer that you communicate through me or through the planning department.
Okay. Then one of the things that I just want to reiterate, and again, I walked in a little bit late to the presentation, but it seemed to me that there was, you know, openings, at least from Public Works, about, you know, reexamining some of the numbers and assumptions upon which we've operated as a city for a long time about, again, how many trips would, you know, bump a road up from a certain width to a higher width. I mean, I can't, you know, encourage that enough. Also, reexamining the kind of 24-foot kind of number that we've been dealing with, they seemed open to examine the possibility. And then the other thing that I didn't say, but the thought occurred to me as we've been sitting here, is that, you know, that one of the interesting slides was of a, kind of the average width of roads across, kind of, Utah. And I, we were sitting, I think as, and I'm forgetting his name now.
Vern.
Vern. As Vern put it, kind of, all their proposals are sitting kind of within that range. And I just wonder, I mean, I think it's helpful to know, but I wonder if an average of what we've been building roads like in the past is the average that we want to compare ourselves to? I mean, aren't we trying to transition away from a certain approach to building roads, particularly wide roads, especially here in Utah? You know, we build wider roads than anywhere I've ever, I've ever lived. And everywhere I've lived has had cars moving around just fine. Is that what we want to do, is kind of fit our, fit our future widths in kind of the average of the past? And I just wonder if there's, that doesn't seem like the wisest thing to do. I wonder if there are other numbers that we might consider in addition to those numbers? Again, helpful information to have. I'm not, I'm not trying to say, well, you did that work for nothing. But now that we know that, it'd be interesting to know what are, you know, what are progressive, not politically progressive, but what are cities who are experimenting with, you know, doing things differently? What are they doing? And, you know, what's possible beyond just what we've done in the past? Anyways, I've gone on too long, you get the picture. But to me, that would be the, a really helpful number to have alongside, here's what the, you know, average road width in Utah, you know, is based on the roads we've been building for the past 50 years, you know, the post-war era, so.
We suggested field trip into San Diego or maybe the east coast, but that was kind of nixed, so.
But as you think about this over the next few weeks, if you think of other questions you'd like to have wrapped into this discussion, other information you'd like, yeah, please just send me an email, and we'll keep track of those. We'll bring Public Works into the discussion and make sure that we're prepared next time this comes in front of you.
And then the other thing would just be the, I ask for the cost-benefit analysis, essentially.
Financial implications, basically.
Yeah, and then one of the answers is, well, like, a 48-foot wide road is twice as expensive as a 24. I get that, but I'm interested to know, like, well, how much more does, you know, two feet cost us in perpetuity, or, you know, for as long as the life of that road is? You know, in other words, I want hard numbers, not just, well, it'd be double, whatever, so.
And let me just ask, are you guys comfortable? I'd love to spend some time tonight talking through this. Let's, you bet, let's? Let's try that.
Okay.
First, that average thing, we don't design by average. We simply did that average road width thing because developers were hitting us with the fact that our roads are different widths than other communities. And that was just to satisfy that concern from developers of where are we at in relationship to other communities. And I think we're comfortable with coming up with whatever width works for Provo. So, hopefully, that wasn't something you think is like a hard number, we're going to stick with the average, because we've never been average, and I guess that's probably why we got questioned on that width by other, by developers in the community. Then you had a question on, on cost per foot. Our square foot price right now to rehab a road is about $1.20 a square foot. So, you know, two foot would be $2.40 a square foot, so per foot of road. So, if you did a block, you'd be $2.40 times about 500 feet, would be about the cost that you'd be looking at.
When you say rehab, tell me what?
So, that would be a mill, where we'd mill two inches of asphalt off the road and put back two inches.
Yeah.
Which is a pretty standard.
You do that how often?
We do that about every 10 years.
Yeah.
And then, are there also numbers for other types of maintenance, or is that the primary?
Yeah, so, if you were to go down to like a surface treatment, a preservative product, would be like 20 cents a square foot. So, it's considerably less, and we do, we do all types of treatments. So, if, on a brand-new road, you normally go in and seal it as soon as you could afford that, because that puts a preservative layer on the surface, makes the whole product last a lot longer. So, instead of overlaying it every 10 years, maybe we get 15 years out of it. So, we do all of those sort of things. And then you just go up from there. That's the cheapest treatment. Then you do like a, like a seal coat or a, what's the name of it? A slurry seal would go up maybe 25 cents a square foot. And then, like, an inch overlay is probably about 70 cents a square foot. So, compare that to completely digging out the road and replacing it. Then you're talking like $50 a square foot. So, you know, you can see the scale, is it's important to take care of roads early to save money in the long run.
Here's what, and I think I'm probably the slow one up here, for that to really ring true for me. So, here's my question, and just in terms of how hard this would be to put together. We have some kind of annual budget for road maintenance, rehab, and that kind of a thing. If we could analyze what that budget is versus what it would be if we were talking about maybe streets that had a little bit less asphalt and that kind of a thing, to be able to come up with just, okay, so, you know, in 2019, this is that difference. That's, that's the context it would take for me to really be able to?
For the most part, you know, Provo's built out, pretty, quite a bit of Provo is built already, and we're left kind of with what widths we already have.
Right.
And there's a lot of extra width out there. I think like the downtown neighborhoods, they're 82 and a half foot of right-of-way. There's a lot of planer there, but there's a lot of asphalt there that doesn't need to be there, too. There's probably 44 feet of asphalt in most of those areas, and that's like a collector width on a local road, so. And we're maintaining that. Up by the temple, the Provo Temple, that road going up past there, that's like 72 feet of asphalt. It's like, what do you do with that? Every time we have to maintain that one, we're like, oh, that's a lot of asphalt, and we probably need half of that. Well, a third, a third less would work. You know, we could go down to a 40-foot width and be fine up there.
It'd be, and I mean, in one sense, obviously, it'd be kind of an academic look at, you know, what the possibility would be. But I think it would give us some sense as well, moving forward as to what the potential might be. Roads, they're the one thing that just doesn't change. They last forever, at least typically, so.
What about things that are that wide? What about, what about not using, you know, 25, 10, 15 feet of the hole? Curb it and turn it into white, white lane or something like that?
We've thought about doing that, but it costs us to like redo curb a lot more. We're spending about $200,000 a block just to put new curb and gutter and stuff like that in, and so.
Get cars off of, off of, you know, eight feet on either side. That's, that's 16 feet that you don't have to upkeep as often as the actually used portion.
Oh, yeah, I see what you mean.
But relatively speaking, maintaining asphalt still is so much more affordable than storm drain issues that you run into and everything else that comes with that cross-section, which is why it's so important to get it right.
Yeah.
When?
So, the financial cost that you're referring to is part of the discussion, but to me, there's another part to this that should also be looked at. This presentation was given to T-MAC a week ago, and when we looked at the 64-foot proposed local, I went back and did some design work and some calculating and figured out that a 64-foot right-of-way in a subdivision would eat up 32% of the land. So, 32% of every acre is going into roadway. So, for every foot you have going into roadway, that's a foot that's not being ta, somebody's not paying taxes on that, which is denying property tax to the school district and the county and the city. You just went through the west side plan, where you recommended to the city council that densities be calculated on a net ratio, and the council took that recommendation seriously, and they adopted that. That's the new policy for the west side. That 64-foot right-of-way translates to a housing density of 2.71 units to the acre. Developers have been used to getting four, and now they're getting 2.71. That has huge financial implications to future development. So, to me, those types of things also need to be brought into this discussion, because they have real impacts.
And maybe on that, and I think this, I appreciated Commissioner Rowan's comments about maybe what is best practice versus best, or what's average, you know, just what's customary. And for a lot of reasons, I think, looking at how other communities in our area do things and understanding how we sit there, that makes a lot of sense. But the Institute of Transportation Engineers or the Land Institute, there are organizations out there that have spent fortunes, I think comparably, researching what maybe some of the ideals are in terms of pavement width for different applications and different things like that. And I think, I mean, Vern's company, they have that kind of information at their fingertips. They could, they could give us, you know, what some of those recommendations are, and we could use that as maybe kind of a measuring stick as well to see how we stack up. For whatever it's worth, that being said, going from where we have been to what we looked at tonight, you know, at least on that 30 feet of asphalt for the local street, which I think is the predominant street typically in a system. And that's, that's a huge step in the right direction, in my opinion. So, you know, the one thing, this is a little thing, but I haven't been a fan necessarily of the foot outside of the sidewalk for a long time, for reasons, I mean, you can deal with that. Maintaining sidewalks, I think, with easements just as well, that shaves a couple of feet off. It's not a lot, but that's just a thought relative to some other things we can, we can look at maybe as, as examples that might be worth considering.
Well, one of the things that Deborah brought up, she was our T-MAC session. On our, on our collector road widths, we, we narrow the planner, you know, because we're widening the asphalt. And she says, her, I think it was her that said this, that why would you want a narrower planner on a higher-speed road? We really ought to be wider, and so, that kind of made things click in my mind. Maybe that's not a thing we're willing to sacrifice in a higher-speed road as, with the planner. But we'll, we'll listen to what you folks think on that. But that was one thing that struck me as being different than, than what I've heard in the past.
There is a significant difference in the trees that you can plant with eight feet versus six. And I think one of the strengths that some of the neighborhoods in Provo have with the wider park strips is tree-lined streets that, at least the potential for that, that you don't see in other communities that haven't.
They feel like lanes in neighborhoods.
Have that space, and, you know, that has all kinds of positive impacts for communities as well. So, if there's anything that I'm going to be really hesitant to sacrifice, it's, it's that space there. I guess that's just my opinion, but I think that's a really big deal, maintaining that. Moving forward, what do we think the next steps are? Another discussion with Public Works on this, is that in the Works, maybe, or?
As I left the study meeting, they were already making modifications to those cross-sections based on what they heard. So, I don't know if we could set something up for next. If that's too quick, maybe next month or something, but to show you like a revision already from what they've heard so far, so. They were talking about making those right now, so.
And I guess another thought that I had, and I'm way behind on emails. I don't know if we have a copy of the? I don't know if we have a copy of the presentation or any materials related to that. But I'd love to have a copy that I could maybe spend a little bit more time looking at. Uh, just, and I, some of our colleagues aren't here tonight. If we could get that.
We got the slideshow, uh, from UDOT, but not, I don't think from Public Works.
Okay.
He said, I think he said he saved it on that computer.
He said he would.
On that desktop.
Yeah, you'll, you'll get what you saw.
I think for me, that'd be great.
Have the.
Whatever they change. Okay.
And I would just say in that, you know, whenever, whenever we meet next, whether it's in two weeks or, or, uh, later, um, again, if you can get us numbers and again, what, what other, you know, some of the organizations that Dave mentioned that are, you know, doing things that are different from what we've done in the past. And I, again, I, I obviously misunderstood what you were using those averages for. I, I understood him in the presentation to be, uh, not a defense in a defensiveness kind of way, but just, uh, look, we're, you know, we're, these new, uh, road widths, uh, or cross sections that we're proposing are, you know, sit comfortably within the range, uh, but you know, your explanation makes sense. Nevertheless, I think that for me, that my, my request for, you know, what are, what are other people doing who are really being, really trying to be innovative, um, uh, about, uh, cross sections and road widths? Uh, what do those look like? What are they doing? What's, you know, um, you know, I wouldn't want to ask, uh, Provo City to do something that hasn't, um, been thought through and, and, and done elsewhere. But it, but it would be useful, I think, to, to know and understand what have people been trying recently as people have been, you know, grappling with, you know, a, a variety of issues, economic ones, you know, kind of fiscal, uh, crises, certainly environmental, uh, uh, issues and crises that, you know, how have people kind of situated themselves in the, in the variety of, of pressures that we're facing now as cities and how they responded through innovation? Um, that's, to me, that would be a really helpful set of, um, numbers, examples to have so that as we think about what's on the table, we can, we can be more educated. You know, I certainly, you know, as you can tell, and, you know, I want us to bring things in as much as we can for a variety of reasons, many of which have been mentioned here. But I feel like, you know, I don't, I can't say, I'm not educated enough to say, well, you know, in, uh, Fort Collins, you know, they've been trying X, you know, a cross section, and it's worked really well. And, you know, what, what can we learn from that? Or not, even if we don't like adopt it wholesale, you know, might we be thinking about some of those things to, to bring in the street widths, bring in the asphalt so that we do preserve a property tax generating property, so that we do save the city, you know, cumulatively, again, I understand it's built, modest pros built out, but we're still building. And, you know, that's going to sit, if we can trim things down, it's going to save us over the, you know, next fifty to a hundred years, a bunch of money, you know? I think just having that for our next discussion, all that information in play, I think it'd be helpful for everybody involved, us as well as, as Public Works and.
Yeah. I, you know, one of the things that you probably haven't been brought into the discussion on was that they talked a little bit about ADT, you know, the average daily trips, which is how many cars are basically traveling a road. Um, we have environmental, uh, numbers on all of that that we developed years and years ago. We took videos of roads and, and had planning commissioners watch video. Most of them are really boring. If you see one car every minute, you watch a minute of video and you're like, okay, that's enough of that. That's a low volume road. That, that's like, you know, the thousand cars a day, um, around that number, maybe fifteen hundred cars a day. And, and that's, that's back then, that was the threshold that, that they decided would be a, 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 a straight they would want to live on. You know, they, they could handle a car every minute driving by and, and mingling with maybe a kid occasionally playing and, and stuff like that. So we have those environmental numbers that were established for each classification of road. And, and, and that's what they were kind of talking about was, were the break points for different widths. Um, up, up until now, we've been using a five hundred ADT, uh, for the, these lower width roads. And so now we're, we're thinking, well, we don't know where that five hundred came from. It was kind of a holdover, I think, from my, before me. Um, cause I don't know where it came from either. And, and so we're thinking about coming more in line with those environmental thresholds. So, you know, you could have a twenty-four foot wide asphalt width or, or a thirty-foot asphalt width with fifteen hundred cars a day, which, which would be very few neighborhoods would get over that. When, when you get out to more of a collector type road, you know, you get up into the couple of thousand, four thousand cars a day. So just a, a normal average subdivision, you'd, you wouldn't get that many cars, so.
I, I guess, um, the main question that I have is, for the most part, Provo's already built out, the roads already exist. And so, um, these new standards, how would they apply? They would apply to new roads, obviously, but what are the thoughts concerning roads that are already laid? Um, you know, I, I know y'all were talking earlier about that when, when Jayman was, was talking. Um, you know, build outs are easy to add to an existing road. Um, or bulb outs, I mean, I'm sorry. But, um, would there be any plan, any goal of using that to reduce the widths of roads that are already in existence? Or would it just be for roads that are going to be built? And because I don't see where Provo has a lot of room for new roads.
Yeah. So for the most part, it's new development, but when we rehab a road, we look at those options. Um, we did that bike boulevard on two hundred east, um, and put bulb outs at intersections, uh, traffic common. There's a, uh, island in the middle of one of them, uh, traffic signal. And, and so as you go up the road, you'll see different features. Uh, when we complete that project, that will have cost around a million dollars. Um, you know, for that same million dollars, we could have paved several blocks of, of the neighborhood. So we spent most of our money on maintenance, but when we have a project like that, we, we implement all, as many of these, uh, ideas as we can. Granted, everything, you know, costs money. And for the most part, uh, being able to do that as the, a fiscal constraint, the, the dollars to, to retrofit a road, uh, with a narrower width and, uh, and other things just gets so high that we don't normally do it unless we have a, a funded project, uh, through any other mechanism than our normal maintenance budget.
But that road just basically got restriped. Is that correct?
Uh, there's bulb outs at the intersections.
And then the, there was a bike lane added.
Yes, yeah. And we, we repaved, uh, eight twenty north. Um, I think, yeah, just this last year, and we put bulb outs at, at a couple of those intersections up there. So, you know, we're trying where we can and where it makes sense to add additional features. Um, but, uh, you know, to take a curb and gutter where it's currently at in sidewalk and move it in ten feet is, is just so expensive that we normally look at, what does it cost to maintain the road as it is? And what would it cost to rehab it? And we go, wow, uh, we can't afford to, to change the road uh, to that new width, just because it's just so much more expensive than just paving it. If we had an unlimited budget, then, then you'd see a lot more things like that happening.
Well, I'll just say, I mean, I love two hundred east, what you've done. I think, I love those, but yeah, money well spent in my mind. And then just to reiterate what's already been said, all the more reason to get the roads in, in a way as, as narrow as we can to begin with, in a way that, again, doesn't, doesn't leave future generations saying, oh, they built this thing to Y, what, and here we are stuck paying for it and too expensive to rehab it.
Yeah.
So I mean, uh, again, you're, you're obviously open to, to the, the conversation, but that's, that's the, the kind of long-term context under which I think we, we want to operate is let's not leave future generations with a problem that, that we've been handed down.
Yeah, and I. Small and get bigger if you have to.
Yeah, the, that, that's kind of our thought, you know, because we, we don't like spending money on big wide widths that we're not using either, but.
Right.
I, I personally like the wide planners. I think that's a very, uh, nice amenity to a neighborhood, but I'm not you.
I like them too.
Some of us may agree, yeah. Anything else on that discussion from tonight? Uh, Maria needs to take off. Um, I want to talk a little about the general plan. Please don't, it'd be boring. We can catch up to speed later, just relative to like next steps on that. Um, I missed a meeting or two here in the last month. Uh, any update on that, any homework for us, anything like that at all?
We can send out to you the next chapter and be prepared to discuss that in our upcoming meeting, uh, depending on whether or not there's going to be a discussion on roads again. But we can get back on redoing those chapters.
Is that where we're at? Just, okay.
We've had pretty pressing presentations, stuff for the last several meetings, it seems. Yes, we have.
Yeah.
I have a comment about, uh, I think sort of relates to our UTA discussion where they create, where they presented the station plan. Um, and I'm wondering if, like, in a hypothetical situation, if there is any property in that area that Provo City owns, I think it would be proactive of us to, uh, put some kind of, uh, I don't know exactly what you would call it, but like a development agreement in place where they, when they do develop a property that the city has sold, it needs to be developed in a certain way. Um, I think we saw this on Second North where, you know, the city in conjunction with some other entities has sold some properties and it's developing in a way that we don't love. And I think we could have gotten ahead of that. Um, but you tell me, can we get ahead of that? Is there an ordinance we could create that says, should the city sell a property, we'd like it to conform to certain design standards?
Um, yeah, I'm sure we can. It may be better, best or most efficient for us to first look at what properties the city owns and then what types of design criteria or guidelines or suggestions you would have in mind. Uh, th- those are pretty heavy policy decisions. So very early in the discussion, we should send those ideas and concepts through to the city council to, um, make sure they feel the same way and are willing to have us continue in, in that path. Like, I'm happy to get with the property, city property manager, get a list of all the city properties.
Yeah, let's, let's start there because I, I'd like to see the, the future properties that are sold and developed regardless of who owns them in the city, um, to be just well-designed. Um, yeah, since our last couple of meetings, that's been on my mind.
Yeah. And a follow-up to that, in regards to the particular property you mentioned, do you know, um, as city staff, whether the discussions about phase two will proceed in any way that's different from how discussions about phase one have proceeded? Does it make sense? So.
Parking phases one of what?
PEG developments.
Oh.
Um, in other words, I, you know, it, I may, I, I just have fallen down on the job of following up by email. I mean, I would love to see the language in the agreement, uh, that, that, that it was claimed, we can't do anything different but what we've done. And, and I don't, I felt a little bit sheepish about, I didn't want to be, come off as being seen as, um, you know, really skeptical. Uh, but I, I would love to see that so that we know what we're working with, especially for phase two. And then I would love to, you know, it would go against their plan to have those two buildings, you know, the park, both parking garages facing Freedom and then the two office buildings, you know, creating a, you know, public square type. I don't want to say, why would we want to make the same mistake twice? Can't we put the, the new, uh, phase two, the office building on Freedom in the parking garage? And you still have the, you know?
Well, a- along those same lines, the architect that you listened to two weeks ago, the arch, PEG's architect said that, starting with, starting with a blank piece of property, it probably may have been a better idea to have the parking under a larger area, so it's not as tall. Would they consider doing something like that in the next phase or next building?
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if they're, uh, so married to four buildings that mirror each other. They wouldn't consider something like that, but that made a lot more sense to me. That suggestion made a lot more sense to me than, um, you know, what eventually is going forward.
Yeah. So do you know where that phase two is in the conversation? Is it, is it already as far along the road as?
No, I think it's, I think it's nowhere near as far along as the first phase was before, um, we were able to start having influence. So, um.
So if that's the case, I want, I want in early, much earlier.
Okay.
Or we want in, I, you know, I just, yeah. If we can avoid, if we can make it half a catastrophe in terms of that parking garage, in my mind, along Freedom, instead of, you know, well, we've done it here, so we've got to do it, uh, on the, we've got to mirror it and make, you know, make it extra, extra, an extra dead zone along.
But understand the way har- every city's process is. Developers spend tens and tens and even hundreds of thousands of dollars before they even get to you. And by the time they get to you and they've spent that much money, there's not a lot of flexibility in the plan. So if you want to have that kind of influence earlier, we either need to have the ordinances in place that are making happen the things that you want to have happen, or we have to change our process to where our planning commission is involved in some more conceptual phase way earlier in the process because no city planning commission gets involved until you do. And by then, a ton of money has been spent. And my experience is the more a developer spends, the less flexible he feels like he can be because of all that money he has already spent.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. And I would just say, yeah, let's change, I mean, I'd be open to changing the process in some way. If not, you know, maybe we don't say like, we need to be involved in every single project. But if we say, we need to be involved in projects earlier on within a certain zone of the city. Or we need, we want to be involved in the, in the project if a development's a certain size. Or we want to be involved in the project if, um, you know, the, the city has sold property to it. Or, you know, any, any number of things we could put, put on the table, but that seems to make sense.
Okay.
And I, just, um, as an option, I know there are some legal councils that would advise against this, but, um, I wonder if there's value on projects that staff views as significant? Or maybe that might, I mean, you know, us to some extent, you know, what things are maybe going to be the hot buttons when they get to us. Early on in the process, just letting applicants know that if they wanted to come to a public forum and discuss an idea and talk about, you know, maybe different components of a project in that non-binding, you know, hopefully, you know, very, uh, transparent kind of a forum like this, you know, after business items are done, just to have a conversation. If there's value for you, maybe us, and maybe the applicants, without creating, you know, a rigid process or anything like that, without making it mandatory.
Without causing a lot of delay.
Hey, if you want to take some time, you know, planning commission might give you ten, fifteen minutes of airtime. You present and get some feedback very early on. Um, I love that.
Yeah.
That seems to, I mean, we might get buy-in earlier and might be able to influence things a lot more before what you just described happens and things become inflexible, so.
What became clear to me, especially during our conversation about this particular project, was that, you know, decisions got made early on without thinking. in my opinion, without considering the larger context of the city at all, you know, to, to, again, to make the decision. And again, that was part of Utah County thing. I understand that whole history. So it might've been an example in an extreme way. But yeah, it just seems that, that too often we've had some version of that of kind of a lack of consideration of you know, the larger context within which this particular project operates by the time it gets to you and, and then to us. Yeah.
I understand. Okay.
Anything else?
I could talk all night.
Motion to adjourn, anybody?
I'm so moved.
Second. We're adjourned. How's that? Thanks.